All right, welcome back guys to another deep work English lesson. Today we are taking a look at the story of Robin Hood. Robin Hood, a very famous figure, maybe real, maybe not real from medieval England. Here's the plan for today. First, we will do a quick read of the story. Yeah, you can just sit back, relax and listen. This will just take me a couple of minutes and you can try to just get a general feel for the story. A general idea, a basic idea of what goes on in the story. The plot, what happens, what takes place. Okay, now after that, second, we will have a vocabulary breakdown. Yeah, a vocabulary breakdown. We will talk in depth. We will talk in a more detailed way about some of the more difficult words, some of the more challenging vocabulary and language that we saw in the story. Just making sure that we understand everything. Okay, third, we will go back for a deep dive into the story. This is where things get interesting. This is where things get really good because now we can apply the knowledge that we learned in the vocabulary breakdown and go line by line through the story to really squeeze every last bit of educational juice that we can out of the story and really get a lot from the story by going line by line and understanding everything. Okay, so last, at the end of today's lesson, we are going to have some discussion questions. Yeah, we're gonna talk, have some speaking practice and talk at length, at length, or talk in depth about some of the bigger ideas and themes that we saw in the story. Okay, if all that sounds good to you guys, click like on this video. Make sure you're subscribed and let's dive in. We'll begin with the quick read. The story of Robin Hood. In the heart of Sherwood Forest, there lived a legendary outlaw named Robin Hood. Robin Hood was known for his incredible archery skills and his unyielding sense of justice. He and his band of merry men had one mission, to steal from the rich and give to the poor. The Sheriff of Nottingham, a cruel and greedy man, was Robin Hood's greatest adversary. Despite numerous attempts to capture him, the sheriff always failed. However, Robin Hood's life was not without challenges. There were times when even his loyal followers began to waffle in their support, especially when the danger seemed too great. One day, news spread that the sheriff had devised a new plan to capture Robin Hood. He had taken the villagers' children hostage, threatening their safety unless Robin Hood surrendered. The situation was dire and the lives of innocent children were at jeopardy. Well, Robin Hood knew he had to act quickly. He devised a plan to rescue the children, but it was risky. His men were hesitant, fearing they might jeopardize their own lives. Robin Hood, however, was resolute. He said, "We must rescue the children for their safety is more important than our own. Fortune favors the bold." The night of the rescue, Robin Hood and his men moved stealthily through the forest. They reached the sheriff's castle and managed to free the children without being detected. Just as they were about to leave, the sheriff appeared, cornering them. A fierce battle ensued and it seemed Robin Hood might have to concede defeat. But in a sudden twist of fate, the sheriff, overconfident in his victory, made a critical error. Robin Hood took advantage of the mistake, disarming the sheriff and securing the children's safe return to their families. The villagers rejoiced and Robin Hood's bravery was celebrated far and wide. The sheriff, humiliated, was forced to concede that he had been outsmarted once again. Robin Hood's legend grew even greater and his commitment to justice remained unshaken. Okay, so guys, that was the quick read of the story. If that felt a little bit challenging, a little bit difficult for you, then don't worry because in the next portion of today's lesson, in the next part of what we're doing today, we're going to break down this story and make sure we can understand it at a very simple level. Okay, but before we do that, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to you guys. You know, in the last month alone, we gained 6,700 subscribers on this channel. That is way more than I had expected. It really exceeded my expectations, so let's keep that going. You guys are liking my videos, leaving me comments and subscribing. That is the best way to grow a YouTube channel and you guys are really pulling through for me. So I appreciate all of your support. I wanted to give a special thanks, a very special thanks to my channel members. My channel members, okay, so the people in this list here, these are new members on my channel and I wanted to say thank you guys so much for supporting Teacher Connor. You know, channel members, they get a lot of extra perks, a lot of extra benefits here on my channel. They get bonus content, more videos. They get PDFs of all my lessons to make sure they can follow along at home. They get to vote on upcoming topics and of course, they support Teacher Connor as well and support what I do here on YouTube as a YouTube English teacher. So just wanted to give a quick shout out to everybody, member or non-member. You guys are really making this channel explode and the future is looking good for this channel. Thanks to you guys, so keep liking, keep commenting and I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you guys. Okay, moving along now to the vocabulary breakdown. Our first word, advanced vocabulary word is concede. Concede, maybe you can say that with me. Concede, concede. It means basically, okay, okay, I'm wrong. It's when you admit or acknowledge that you are incorrect, right? To admit something is true or valid after first having denied it. Okay, so at first you said, no, that's not true, or no, I disagree, or no, that's incorrect. But then eventually you came around. That's another way of thinking about this. If you come around, then at first you said no, but now you say, okay, I agree. I acknowledge or admit that you are correct and that I am wrong. Okay, so those are all the synonyms or similar expressions and ways to say this word. But now let's talk quickly about this side of the aisle, the antonyms. If you don't concede, then maybe you refuse or deny, right? At first you say you're wrong, you're wrong and I'm right and you don't change your mind. You don't come around, you don't concede. You deny that the other person in the disagreement is correct. You refuse to acknowledge that they are right. Okay, so in the story, we saw this in context. The sheriff was forced to concede that he had been outsmarted once again. That's how this word appears in our story. That's how we see this word in Robin Hood. So we see that the sheriff, that's the bad guy in the story, that's the villain. Villain, that means the bad guy, right? He concedes, he doesn't just concede, he is forced to concede. He has to concede that he has been outsmarted once again. So you know, he is using his smarts, he's using his brain power. Robin Hood is using his smarts, he's using his brain power. It's a battle of wits, a battle of wits. Okay, wits, that just means smarts or intelligence, right? And the sheriff and Robin Hood, they are competing against each other in a battle of wits. But in the end, the sheriff is outsmarted. Okay, he's outdone, he is bested, he is mentally beaten. Mentally bested, we can say bested, that's another way of having said that you, you have victory over somebody, that you beat somebody. Somebody was bested by you, so you beat them. Okay, so the sheriff has to say, okay, okay, you're right, I'm wrong, you're smarter than me. So here's another example sentence and this one is unrelated to the story. It's just a random example sentence. She had to concede defeat when her opponent proved stronger. Okay, opponent, that just means her adversary, the person that she is competing against, right? She had to say, okay, okay, you win, when her opponent proved stronger or proved to be stronger. Okay, so she was proven as the loser. She was proven as the loser and her opponent was proven as the victor. So what I like to do in the vocabulary breakdown is draw pictures. I'm a visual learner personally and I know that many of you guys are too. Even if you're not, it can be a fun way to take a slight break, a step back from the learning and just try to understand the vocabulary words in a slightly different way. So I want to ask you, how can we draw a picture of this word concede, of this idea of conceding to remember it a bit better? Okay, so maybe I'll do a before and after. B stands for before, A stands for after. Maybe there's two people who are looking very smug, very smug, very cocky. They both look smug, they both look cocky. That means they're very full of themselves, okay? And they are engaging in a battle of wits. They're trying to see who is smarter. He thinks I'm smarter than you. He thinks, no, I'm smarter than you. Well, at the end of the battle of wits, this guy has to concede to his opponent, right? His opponent is looking really happy. The first guy is looking a little bummed out. He says, okay, okay, you win, I lose, he concedes. Up next, the second word I wanted to talk about was waffle. Waffle, yeah, not the thing you eat, not the breakfast food. This can be used as a verb as well. Basically, it means to be unable to make a decision or to change opinions. Okay, so if you change your opinion, if you cannot make up your mind, then maybe you're waffling on something. And rephrased, I think this is a better way of thinking about it. It means you go back and forth without deciding. So you know, maybe one moment you're thinking, yeah, this is a good idea. I really want to do this. The next minute, the next moment, you're thinking, uh, you know, actually, maybe this isn't the best idea. Maybe I'm not on board after all, not on board, right? That just means, uh, maybe I'm not, uh, going to go through with this like I thought I was. Maybe I actually don't want this. Okay, so hesitating is maybe another way to think about it. Okay, so if you hesitate, then yeah, maybe you kind of want to do it, you kind of don't want to do it. Okay, now down here, we can see some antonyms, some opposite words like decide. If you're decisive, you make a decision, right? You say, okay, I'm going to do this. You are definitely not someone who waffles. You are resolute in your thinking, you are determined. That's another good way to think about the opposite of this word. If you are determined to do something, if you have determination to make something happen, right? Then you are the opposite of someone who waffles. Someone who waffles, eh, they go back and forth, they can't make up their mind. In the story, we saw even his loyal followers began to waffle in their support. Okay, so even Robin Hood's loyal followers, the people who support him and you know, are always by his side, supporting him, these are the most loyal or maybe we could say devoted, devoted, or maybe his most trusted followers, the people he trusts the most, the most deeply. Even, even these people, the most loyal of his followers, they start to waffle in their support. They start to, maybe we could say, second guess. They start to second guess themselves, or we could also say flip flop. Okay, maybe they're starting to flip flop in their support. Okay, so yeah, that's not good for Robin Hood, right? If his most loyal followers are beginning to second guess themselves, then what about his followers that are not so loyal? Maybe they will definitely change their minds, right? Okay, so another example sentence here. She tends to waffle when choosing where to eat dinner. Okay, so she's, it's, it's, it's hard for her to make up her mind about where to eat dinner. Okay, if you are a channel member and you're following along with your PDF at home, it's time for us to draw a picture. Okay, and once again, if you're not a channel member, just click the join button next to the subscribe button. It's only the price of a cup of coffee. However, I do want to make a note. I think if you have an iPhone or a Mac, that button might not appear. So you have to do it from Safari on your iPhone or you have to do it from a PC. I've had a lot of you guys let me know that you haven't been able to find the join button and I'm sorry for the hassle there if you are an iPhone or a Mac user. Now, that being said, let's go ahead and get a visual representation of this word, waffle, down here. Now, I'm not going to draw the noun version, the breakfast food, right? What I'm going to do is draw somebody who looks like they really can't make up their mind. Okay, what do they want to eat? Do they want to eat pizza? Do they want to eat a hamburger? Do they want to eat maybe some tacos? You know, they cannot make up their mind. One second, they think pizza sounds good, the next, they think a hamburger is what they're going to do. And then after that, they're like, oh, actually taco sounds pretty good. So they are waffling, waffling, waffling in their decision making. Okay, moving right along, we have another fantastic word, a really useful word. Jeopardize, jeper-dize, okay, jeopardize. That means to put something or someone in danger or at risk, to risk harming or losing something, like endanger something, to risk something, okay? An antonym might be to protect something, to safeguard something, to ensure the safety of something, right? So there are lots of things you can jeopardize. Maybe you jeopardize a friendship. Okay, um, yeah, your friend invites you to a party and you make an excuse. You say, ah, you know, I don't want to go to this party. And so you tell them that you're sick, but then you go out to eat dinner and they see you, even though you're supposed to be sick, right? Uh-oh, that's going to jeopardize your friendship. That's going to put your friendship in danger. That's going to put your friendship at risk, right? In other words, you are risking harming your friendship or losing it altogether. Yeah, maybe you will lose this person as your friend altogether. You can jeopardize money, you can jeopardize an opportunity, you can jeopardize a relationship. Let's take a look at the context from the story. He knew he could jeopardize their lives by taking such a risk. Okay, so in the story, Robin Hood wants to save these children who have been kidnapped, who have been captured, right, by the bad guys in the story. And he knows that if he takes a big risk, it could jeopardize what? It could jeopardize their lives. So Robin Hood wants to find a way to sort out this situation and, and you know, fix this, this problem, sort out this conflict. He wants to find a way to do that, that does not jeopardize their lives. You know, these kids are in trouble, they are at risk, they are in danger and he wants to lower that risk as much as possible. He wants to find a way to save them that does not jeopardize their safety. Okay, so here's an unrelated example. The decision to delay could jeopardize the entire project. Okay, here's a good real world example of how to use this word. Seems like there's a project that people are working on and they're trying to make a decision, right? The decision hasn't been made yet, but the decision to delay or not delay this project, it could jeopardize the entire project. It could jeopardize the whole thing. Okay, the whole shebang, sometimes people say, that's kind of a fun expression. The whole shebang. That just means the whole thing. Okay, so you know, this decision, it's a very important decision. If they do delay the project, it might jeopardize the whole thing. It might put it at risk. Okay, so you know, I'm going to draw an example here. I think what I'm going to do is, uh, you know, here's my bag of money. You can see the dollar sign there and I was trying to decide where to put this money, where to keep it safe. And I've put it where? I've put it on top of a big cliff, right? I've put it on top of a big cliff. That doesn't seem very safe. In fact, it's a very windy cliff and you know, this money is at risk of being blown off of the windy cliff and falling down into the water. So obviously, this is not a very secure place to keep the money. It's not very protected, it's not, uh, you know, its safety is not insured in this location. So, uh, you know, I have jeopardized this money by placing it here. Okay, if you're following along at home, you can pause the video, draw a picture of your own. We're moving right along here with an idiom or an expression, something people say. Eh, these idioms are not always so obvious, they're not always so clear, right? So I'd like to include one idiom with my vocabulary breakdowns, just to spice it up a little bit and keep it fun, keep it interesting. You know, idioms are something that if you were to use them in conversation with a native speaker, they'd probably be really impressed. It shows a deeper command and understanding of the language if you're able to use the language more playfully like this, right? So here's a really interesting idiom, fortune favors the bold. Fortune, that can mean success, can mean success, it can mean money. You know, like if you have a big fortune, then you have lots of money. So, but basically in this context, it means succeeding. Okay, if you want to succeed, fortune favors the bold. So you need to be brazen, you need to be bold, you need to be brave, you need to be courageous. Courageous, okay? You need to really put yourself out there. So in other words, those who take risks are often rewarded. Okay, those who take risks are often rewarded. Taking bold actions can lead to great rewards. All right, so bravery brings rewards, boldness pays off. Those are all different ways of thinking about this idiom. Okay, basically, uh, you know, if you want to make things happen, if you want to see success, if you want to taste success, people sometimes say, get a taste of success, then you need to put yourself out there. You need to try, you need to do things that other people aren't willing to do. And yes, maybe it's a little bit risky. Maybe it's, uh, something that pushes you out of your comfort zone. But you know, other people aren't willing to do it, so they're not going to see the fortune. Fortune is not going to favor them. Yeah, the opposite of this is that maybe caution leads to safety. Hesitation hinders success. So if you hesitate, if you wait, if you, to use a vocabulary word, waffle. If you're waffling, oh, I don't know what to do, I'm not sure, that could hinder your success or that could, uh, you know, be a detriment to your success. That could be a roadblock to your success. That could be an obstacle, it's a good word, an obstacle to your success. Okay, in the story, what did we see? The context was, Robin Hood said, "Fortune favors the bold" as he prepared for the rescue. Okay, now I'm going to be honest, I think that's kind of a weird thing for him to say in this situation. I'm not sure it actually fits very well in this part of the story because what is Robin Hood doing? He's preparing to save these kids, rescue these kids, right? Now, why is he doing that? As a reader of the story, as a fan of Robin Hood, we hope he's doing that for the children out of the goodness of his heart, out of the kindness of his heart, right? We hope that he just wants to help these kids and save them and save the day and make sure everyone's safe and secure. But he says, "Fortune favors the bold." That seems a little bit superficial to me. It almost seems like he has an ulterior motive, ulterior motive. In other words, he's trying to get something else out of this. There's a, there's a different reason why he's doing this. He's doing this not for the obvious reason, but for a different one that benefits him personally, right? Like, does he think he's going to get rich if he saves these kids? Is that why he's doing this, to make some money? It seems disingenuous, so I actually think he doesn't use this expression correctly. How to use it correctly? I think the second example is much better, so pay attention to this one. Okay, she took a big risk knowing that fortune favors the bold. Okay, so we normally see this in the world of business, okay? The world of entrepreneurship, okay? If you're somebody who is looking to grow their money and invest in different companies, different business opportunities, then these are the situations when you might use this idiom, fortune favors the bold, right? So if you want to get rich, you gotta take some risks. Okay, now what to draw for an image? Well, I'm going to draw two people. You know, one is at home comfortably watching TV. There he is in his living room, watching TV. And you know, maybe he has a little bit of money, I'm going to draw two dollar signs. But he has a brother, okay? This guy has a brother and you know, this brother is out fighting a dragon. So I'm going to draw a sword, okay? There's a sword and here's a dragon's mouth, an angry dragon. See the sharp teeth, breathing fire? And you know, what is the dragon protecting? The dragon is protecting a big pile of money. Okay, here's a big pile of money. We can see a crown, we can see a medallion. A medallion is like a necklace with a coin on the end, right? We can see lots of treasure, basically. Now, you know, we've got brother A, we've got brother B. Brother A is going to, you know, probably have a pretty comfortable life. You know, he is never going to be super duper crazy rich or wealthy or anything like that, but he will probably live a comfortable life. He's watching TV, he's got a He's watching TV, he's got a little money, he's got a house. Brother B is the one who's taking a big risk. Now, maybe this dragon will burn him alive and that will be the end of his story, but maybe he will slay the dragon. That's kind of a, uh, a storybook way, a literary way of saying defeat or kill, right? He's going to kill this dragon, maybe he can kill the dragon and he can get the treasure. Now, if he is able to succeed, this is something he can say to his brother, to brother A. He can say, "You know what, brother? Fortune favors the bold. You lead a comfortable life at home and, uh, I decided to be bold. I came out and I fought the dragon and I got the treasure. So you know what? Fortune favors the bold. I'm the bold one." Okay, my friends, we're moving right along here. We read the story quickly, then we did a vocabulary deep dive to make sure that we understood a couple of those more challenging words. And now it's time for a deep dive in the story. Okay, so we're going to go back through the story line by line, sentence by sentence, and make sure that we understand every last word. This is the part of the lesson that can benefit your English skills and progress the most. Okay, so let's get into the nitty gritty. The nitty gritty. That means let's get into the details of this story. Okay, the story of Robin Hood. "In the heart of Sherwood Forest, in the heart of it, in the middle of the forest, there lived a legendary outlaw named Robin Hood." Okay, an outlaw is someone who does not follow the law and maybe they are wanted by the law. Maybe they're a criminal, maybe they're a bandit, someone who steals or robs. Um, it could be any number of things, but they are wanted by the police or the law, whoever is enforcing justice. Okay, so that's Robin Hood. He's an outlaw and he's not just an outlaw, he's a legendary outlaw. What is legendary? That means he is so well-known, so famous that legends are told of him, stories are told, tales are told of him, right? So everyone knows about him. "Robin Hood was known for his incredible or very good archery skills and his unyielding sense of justice." Okay, archery skills, archery, that's using a bow and arrow, okay? He's a skilled archer, that's the noun, okay? Uh, archery skills and he also has this unyielding sense of justice. Justice just means knowing right and wrong. Yeah, knowing right and wrong, being able to tell them apart, being able to differentiate or distinguish between right and wrong. Two big words there, differentiate, distinguish, that just means you can tell them apart clearly, right? He has this unyielding sense of justice, so he is really committed. He's really committed to the idea of justice. It's something he really, really believes in. So he and his band, just means group, a group of people. He and his band of merry men had one mission, one thing they're trying to do. They want to steal or rob the rich and give to the poor. Okay, rich people with lots of money, poor people without any money, zero money, okay? So he's got this group, Robin Hood, and they have this sense of justice and they have this mission, this thing they're trying to do, this goal, maybe a goal is a good way to think about it. They want to take money from rich people and give that money back to the people who need it most. Give it to the needy, give it to the people who, uh, really need help, okay? The poor. "The sheriff of Nottingham, a cruel and greedy man, was Robin Hood's greatest adversary." Okay, he's the sheriff. He is the law. He is, you can think of it as kind of like the, the chief of police, okay? He's a high-ranking official, uh, when it comes to the law and enforcing the law. Enforcing, that just means making sure people actually follow the law. Okay, so this guy, and you know Nottingham is, uh, a place, maybe it's a city, maybe it's a town, okay, or an area in England, I'm actually not really sure, it's probably a city. This sheriff, he's cruel and he's greedy. Okay, cruel means that maybe another way of thinking about cruel is heartless. Yeah, he's not compassionate. Um, you know, he maybe doesn't treat people very well. He isn't just cruel though, he's also greedy, greedy, okay? He wants and wants and wants, he wants more and more. So this sheriff, he was Robin Hood's greatest adversary. Greatest just means biggest or most notable, most noteworthy adversary. An adversary is an opponent, somebody who is on the opposite team as yours, somebody who is going against you, okay? Now, despite or in spite of numerous attempts to capture him, the sheriff always failed. So, you know, numerous attempts, the sheriff is trying over and over to capture Robin Hood or get him, okay? He probably wants to throw him in jail or imprison. It's sort of a more formal way of saying throw someone in jail. Wants to imprison him, but the sheriff can't do it. He's always failing, he's never been successful, okay? However, Robin Hood's life was not without challenges, okay? It was not without challenges. If we said that his life was without challenges, then he's got a good life, right? It's without challenges, without bad things, without problems. So there are no problems, right? But we have a double negative here. We call this a double negative. It is not without challenges, so there are challenges. "There were times when even his loyal followers began to waffle in their support vocab word, especially when the danger seemed too great." Okay, now this part of the sentence, we already took a look at and now we have some more context. Now we know why his loyal followers are waffling in their support. It's because sometimes danger, it seems too great. Uh, things seem too dangerous, too perilous. Here's a good word, perilous, okay? Too hazardous, too hap-hazard, hap-hazard. These all mean the same thing. They mean dangerous, fraught with danger. "So one day news spread, it's going all over the place, that the sheriff had devised, or maybe we could say fought up. He had imagined, imagined up, fought up, crafted a new plan to capture Robin Hood." So yeah, there are a lot of synonyms for this, but basically we can say, "The sheriff has made a new plan to get Robin Hood, capture him, catch him," right? "He had taken the villagers' children hostage, ooh, threatening their safety unless Robin Hood surrendered." Okay, this is a terrible thing to do. Now we have proof of the sheriff's cruelty and heartlessness, right? Because he took the villagers' children hostage. What does that mean? If you take someone hostage, then you use them as a tool to extract money from their loved ones, right? So in other words, maybe you take someone hostage and you say, "If you give me $1 million, I will give them back." Okay, so you are blackmailing people for money. So, you know, the sheriff, he takes children hostage and he's threatening their safety. He's saying, "Robin Hood, unless you surrender." I'm going to draw a white flag waving, okay? A white flag, that's the classic symbol of surrender, right? Waving a white flag means, "I surrender." And he says, "Robin Hood, unless you give yourself up, unless you surrender, then I cannot guarantee the safety of these children." Okay, so the situation was dire. It was a very bad situation. "The outlook was grim." That's another way we could say this. Just basically looking at everything that's going on, looking at everything. The outlook of things was grim. It's looking not so positive, right? And the lives of these innocent children, their lives were at jeopardy. We could also say in jeopardy. Their lives were at jeopardy, their lives were in jeopardy, or their lives were jeopardized, their lives were being jeopardized. Okay, now these kids, they're innocent. Going to draw a big innocent face. This is supposed to be... It's not a very good innocent face, is it? Let me try again, hold on. Here's a better innocent face. Aw, look, this poor guy, he didn't do anything wrong. Wow, that's a really bad attempt at drawing an innocent face. I don't know what I was trying to do there, but this guy is definitely innocent. Look at him, he hasn't done anything wrong, okay? If you're innocent, then that means you haven't done anything wrong, you are not guilty. Okay, so the situation, it's not looking good. The outlook is grim. We can also say, "The outlook is rather bleak." It's looking dark, this situation. "Robin Hood knew he had to act quickly." Act just means do something, S-T-H for something. He knew he had to do something quickly, he had to act fast. So he devised a plan, he made a plan to rescue or save the children. "But it was risky. Maybe it would work, maybe it would not work." Okay, that means it's risky. There's a lot of risk involved in this plan. "His men were hesitant, fearing they might jeopardize their own lives." So, you know, his merry men, his, uh, gang of followers, they're hesitant, they're waffling, right? They're waffling in their support, they're thinking, "Man, I wanna save these kids, definitely, but I don't wanna jeopardize my own life." "Robin Hood, however, was resolute." Resolute, we've talked about this word before, it just means you are not going to change your mind. You believe what you believe and you are firm, you are firm in your beliefs. Here's a big word, you are firm in your convictions, convictions, okay? The things that you believe to be true, you're firm in them. You, uh, you, you deeply believe them or concretely believe them, okay? "He said, 'We must rescue the children for their safety is more important than our own.'" So their safety is more important than our own safety. Uh, Robin Hood is being very selfless here, but then strangely, we talked about this, he says, "Fortune favors the bold." Is this the best situation to be using this idiom, this expression? Uh, I'm not sure about that. Seems like he thinks there's going to be a big reward or a lot of personal gain for doing this. Uh, I think he should want to do it just to help the kids, just to be a good person, just because it's the right thing to do, right? "The night of the rescue, Robin Hood and his men moved stealthily." We could also say sneakily, quietly, uh, through the forest. So if you move stealthily, maybe you're kind of like a ninja, right? You don't want to be found, you don't want to be caught, you don't want to be detected, detected, right? Or spotted, noticed. "They reached the sheriff's castle and managed to free the children without being detected." Here's the word I was just talking about. So they were not caught. Hooray, they were not caught, okay? They were not detected. "Just as they were about to leave, okay, the sheriff appeared. He showed his face, cornering them." Ooh, here's a good verb, he cornered them. That means he's got them backed into a corner. He, uh, they've got their backs against the wall, there's nowhere to run, there's nowhere to hide. He's got them pinned down. He's got them pinned down, we can also say. So they can't run. "A fierce battle ensues." Ensue, that just means follows or happens next, okay? A fierce battle, that means a really intense battle, a really maybe violent battle. That's what happens next, okay? That's what ensues after. "And it seemed that Robin Hood might have to concede defeat. He might have to say, 'Okay, okay, you win, I lose.'" "But in a sudden twist of fate, the sheriff, overconfident in his victory, made a critical error." This is a great sentence. Maybe you guys can pause the video, try saying this out loud. A sudden twist of fate. Yeah, we've talked about this before, it means, you know, the tables have turned. Another expression. It means the way things are going, the direction things are heading suddenly shifts, suddenly changes. And the sheriff, he was confident, maybe too confident. He's overconfident, overconfident in what? In his looks, in his fortune, in his reputation? No, he is overconfident in the victory. He made a critical error. A critical error is a mistake, that's a really bad mistake. Error means mistake, critical means like a really, uh, pronounced mistake, a really bad mistake, okay? "Robin Hood took advantage of this mistake, disarming the sheriff and securing the children's safe return to their families." So in the story, we don't see what this mistake was, but maybe he, maybe the sheriff left himself open. He left himself open. Maybe there was a blind spot or a vulnerability in his plan. Robin Hood took advantage of that mistake to disarm, disarm the sheriff. If you disarm somebody, then you knock the weapon out of their hands. Like maybe they're holding a knife or a gun or a sword. If you disarm them, then you knock their weapon away from them so that they can't use it anymore. Okay, so Robin Hood, he disarms the sheriff and he secures the children's safe return to their families, okay? He secures it, he locks it in, he locks it in, might be another way to say that. So, you know, the villagers, they rejoice. The villagers rejoiced, they were so, so happy about this. They're celebrating Robin Hood's bravery. "It was celebrated far and wide. People all over Nottingham are going, 'Yeah, woo, you did it, you did it, Robin Hood.'" That's what celebrating is. Okay, so the sheriff was humiliated. Great word, humiliated, deeply embarrassed. Okay, he was deeply embarrassed and, you know, he, uh, Robin Hood made him look like a fool, right? Robin Hood really got the better of him. And, you know, the sheriff was forced to concede, forced to admit that once again, he had been outsmarted by who? By Robin Hood. "Robin Hood's legend, the story of Robin Hood grew in popularity, uh, even greater." So it had already been a very popular legend, but now it became even more popular. And his commitment... And his commitment or his dedication to justice, it remained unshaken. Hmm, okay, he's got this dedication, remember? This unyielding sense of justice. And after this battle with the sheriff and rescuing the kids, it remains unshaken. So he is still steadfast, steadfast in his beliefs. He believes in justice more than ever. Okay, if you guys are still with me, then you should give yourself a pat on the back to congratulate yourself. You're doing fantastic. We have one more portion in today's video, discussion questions and speaking practice. Sometimes we answer all three of these questions at the end of videos. Today I want to do something a little bit different. So here's the plan. First, I'm going to read all three of these questions to you and just make sure we understand what is being asked so we can answer accurately. Um, and then I would like you to pick one to respond to. We're just going to respond to one today and there's also an alternative option. If you, if you would like to, you can also just retell the story of Robin Hood, retell the story, tell it again in your own words. I think that's a really great thing to do after reading a story or learning something is to take what you've learned and repackage it with your own words, your own language. Pretend that you're teaching someone this story, right? The best way to really learn something is to teach it to somebody else, okay? So that's another option. Here's number four. You could also just retell the story of Robin Hood from everything that we've seen and learned today. But let's take a look at these three questions. If you were one of Robin Hood's merry men, part of his group, okay? How would you have felt about the plan to rescue the children? Would you support it or would you waffle in your support? Would you be hesitant, a little unsure of supporting him and this plan? So basically, do you think it's a good or a bad idea to go in and try to save these kids? You know, it could be a trap. It could be a trap set by the sheriff, right? So it might not be the smartest thing to rush in and try to save them. You can talk about that for one minute if you please. Another option is, how do you think Robin Hood's actions demonstrate the idiom, fortune favors the bold? Can you think of a situation where taking a risk paid off for you or someone you know? Okay, so yeah, I think the second part of this is what's really worth talking about here. You can tell me about a time in your life where you took a big risk and maybe it paid off, okay? Maybe there were some positive results, some good things happened as a result of you taking that risk, okay? Now, option three, uh, what would you have done in Robin Hood's place to ensure the children's safety without jeopardizing your own life? In other words, if you were in Robin Hood's shoes, if you were in his shoes, uh, that means if you were him, if you were in his place, would you have done the same thing? Is there another option here that we're not seeing for rescuing these kids, right? You can talk about that in your response. Okay, now I think I'm going to talk about number two. So I'm going to demonstrate for you guys what I would like you to do, okay? I'm going to take one minute and I am going to respond to this idea right here. Here I go. Okay, can I think of a situation where taking a risk paid off for me? I am hoping, to use an example from my life, I am hoping that making YouTube videos will eventually pay off for me. Now, I say that because I do feel that I've taken a risk. I'm spending a lot of time on these videos. I'm spending a lot of energy on these videos and I'm also spending a lot of money on this channel. I bought a new computer, a new phone, a new lights, a new microphone. This microphone is brand new and it cost me a lot of money. I made a big investment in this channel and that does feel like a risk, but fortune favors the bold and no risk, no reward. No risk, no reward, no pain, no gain, right? Okay, that was my minute. I'd like for you to take a minute and, uh, pick one of these four possibilities and go Guys, thank you so much. If you made it all the way through today's video, then you are a rock star and you have made a big investment in yourself and in your future as an English speaker. Congratulations. But don't let your study session end here. I'm going to put another video up on the screen. Let's keep going. I'll meet you there.